The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our Town Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 22nd, 7:00 PM. I will ask Councilman Carrier to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll continue on. We do not have a presentation or a public hearing. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meetings, please?
No move.
Second.
Okay, we have two that we're approving. Are there any-
February 6th and the 13th.
Okay, great. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Announcements or reports? Do we have any reports or announcements tonight?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have one thing, which I know, actually, Scott's gonna bring it up, so I'll just let it be.
Scott's gonna do it?
Yeah. Don't worry about it.
All right, we'll wait for that. Bated breath, I'm sure. All right, appointments and resignations. This evening, as our first order of business, we have a police officer appointment. But what I'd like to do is ask Chief Catania, if you could please come up and give us a little bit of background on our candidate that we're gonna be voting on tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce entry-level police officer candidate Troy Noble to the council. Troy, can you step up with me? Troy was born and raised in West Haven, Connecticut. He attended the University of New Haven, where he earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a concentration in criminal justice administration. Troy's a certified police officer, having been certified through the academy while with the Torrington Police Department. While at the police academy, Troy met Plainville's Officer Mark Martocci. Officer Martocci spoke quite favorably about the town of Plainville and the police department. Troy noted that Officer Martocci was very positive about his colleagues and about our policing philosophy. So knowing that we were hiring, Troy decided to apply with us. Upon interviewing Troy, it was very easy to see that this young man will be a good fit with the department. He's friendly, approachable, intelligent, and motivated. For these reasons, I am recommending Troy Noble to the council for appointment as an entry-level police officer. If you approve, Troy would participate in the abbreviated field training program designed for certified police officers. Upon completion of his field training, Troy will be assigned to the patrol unit, where he would fill a vacant and funded position.
Great, thank you, Chief. So what I would ask for is a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Troy Noble to the position of police officer effective February 23rd, 2017, and as a condition of continued employment, he must successfully complete Plainville Police Department Field Training Program.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Good luck to you.
Oh, very much.
I'm sure we'll be very fortunate to have you with us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations.
Chief, you're gonna do the badge?
Yeah, you can have his girlfriend or whoever. Troy, come on and stand up.
We're half done, yeah.
Got another hour and a half.
So before we pin this on you, I just want to say, welcome to Plainville Police Department.
Thank you very much.
You are joining a wonderful department. I know that all of these guys, they're gonna do a great job getting you up and running with field training. You have a great chief, great leadership, great lieutenants, and I welcome you to Plainville on behalf of the Town Council.
Very much.
I want to take a minute to thank all the rest of the Town Council, the Town Manager, and Chief Catania for this opportunity. I'm looking forward for my career here and look forward to service community. And I want to thank my family for coming, helping form the person that I am today and showing the support that I've received throughout my place, by time in the academy and time throughout this process. So I want to thank you all.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Okay, number two, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to accept with regret the resignation of Eric Levy from the Conservation Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, just wanted to comment that Eric was a very committed member of the commission, not only in terms of attending meetings, but I have learned that he's also somebody who has given a lot of hands-on service to the town, whether it was river cleanup, and apparently it was very, very helpful in terms of the aftermath of the fish kill at Pataruski. Just want to mention that.
Thank you for those comments. All right, any other comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, number three.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to accept the retirement of Thomas Boreo from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to accept the retirement of John Koala from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to accept the retirement of John Koala from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to accept the retirement of John Koala from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And last but not least, motion to accept with regret the resignation of Bruce Lozier from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any other appointments or resignations this evening? No? All right, moving on. Board of Education, Chair Saunders.
Hi, good evening. Andrea Saunders, 55, Lawn Drive. I know Mr. Lee is going to be talking about the governor's proposed budget in his report, but Dr. Brummett and I and our fellow board member Nicole went up while she testified in front of appropriations at the Capitol, along with many other superintendents, and I was explaining to some of the council members, there were so many people there, they had to split appropriations into two rooms because there were so many people that wanted to speak. Dr. Brummett wanted me to just, if you don't mind, just kind of share what some of the statements that she made to the Appropriations Committee. She had said that she was superintendent, but had only been superintendent for the last 10 months, and that two months after she was appointed superintendent and a month after Plainville's operating budget was overwhelmingly approved via the referendum process, we were notified of $175,000 in cuts to our ECS and transportation grants. In September, after all the staff was in place, the State Department of Education notified us of $100,000 to our open choice grant. We are a district that has been a big supporter of the choice program, and we currently have 118 open choice students, which is close to 5% of our total school enrollment. Then in January of 2017, we were notified of additional ECS cuts to Plainville of 95,000. These funding sources have been reliable contributors to our school district and many others for at least the past 15 years. In spite of these stunning cuts, nothing could have prepared me, my Director of Finance, the Board of Education, the Town Council, the Town Manager, and her superintendent colleagues across the state for Governor Malloy's announcement last Wednesday. When my Town Manager, Robert Lee, completed his analysis, I was horrified to learn that Plainville would lose close to $1 million in state aid for next year as a result of ECS and other grant reductions and the requirement that towns must now pay a third of the contribution for the teachers' retirement fund. Let me be clear, if this budget proposal is not significantly modified, Plainville students and most of their counterparts throughout the state will lose educational services. One proposed solution we've discussed in Plainville is to cut our operating budget, which we currently, you know, we passed at 1.95, which is already laying with no new positions, merely a continuation of programs given current contractual increases and a reduction of two teachers and two tutors to a 0% increase. If this happens, and our government officials endorse this, she said she'll have no choice but to reduce teaching and support staff positions, including eliminating summer school programs for our most at-risk learners, at least six certified teachers, and at least 10 tutors in Paris. This will reduce instructional support services for our students most in need, increase class sizes, and reduce course options at our high school. This will also damage morale, as teachers who remain will have more to do with less support and put at least 20 staff members into the unemployment line. The governor's budget proposal is terrible for our students, and whatever benefits our neediest districts receive will be at the peril of all the other students in the state. Please do not support this proposal. The ramifications will be felt by our students for many years to come. Thank you. And this was only one, Dr. Brummett was one of many superintendents from around the state that testified, so hopefully the commission really did listen, and we'll see what happens. By the way, one other thing that I, that the Senator who was in charge of the, she was the chair of the commission, she said that they're looking, I don't know if this affects Plainville, but they're looking to see for districts that are saying, "We're not gonna have enough information before we pass our budget, do the mill rate, blah, blah, blah." She's saying that they're gonna try to get the revenues in by the end of March, and that maybe by the end of April, they'll have a better understanding of where they are, and that towns, they're gonna give towns leeways to do their budgets later in the year. I know we have a charter, so I don't know if that really affects us, but that was one of the things that she did propose. So I don't, again, I don't know where that's gonna go. And I was telling Scott and Kathy and Deb and Danny that a lot of the speakers that got up, the chairwoman, the Senator, asked them if they would be okay with increases in revenue, sales tax, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I took from that that that's one of the things they're now considering, is if we're not gonna, you know, pass the 30% down to the towns, we gotta make it up some other way, and they would do it through whatever kind of tax increases, you know, they were talking about. So I just wanted to update you guys on that. And Dr. Brummett and I have talked, and she said, you know, should we put forth, we only put forth the budget we need right now, and we agree to work as a team when we get the final numbers from the state. And this is what many, she talks to a lot of superintendents in the state, they're meeting a lot more because of what's happening, and she said that's consistent with what most districts are doing. I mean, I only know of two towns that are specifically now budgeting for the pension in a what-if status, and we just don't feel right now that we should decimate our budget on something that may not pass. So that's where we are on that. I know Robert's gonna be talking about the Wheeler meeting next Wednesday. I found out the Wheeler PTO meeting was supposed to be tonight, so anybody that's going next week, they are doing their PTO meeting first, and then they will do their Wheeler presentation. So I don't know if people are aware of that, because I didn't know that until I called his office, Mr. Batchelder's office, today. So they expect a good parent turnout, and apparently they have a strong parent group that's ready to move ahead. So that's all I have for now. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have an observation about all that is happening, not just to schools, but to cities and towns. In the past six or eight years, boards of education have been expanding their programs, all-day kindergarten, all-day preschool, all supported by the State Board of Education, supported by the State of Connecticut. Those are expensive expansions of our programs at the schools. And now, we're having money taken away from the school funding. I just don't understand the logic and how some, at some point, these programs were embraced, and they were said, "We should have these," and, yes, we'll support that, and now support is being taken away. And cities and towns such as Plainville have extraordinarily limited resources to support everything that has been built up over the past, let's say, 10 years. It's kind of disturbing that that is going on, and I know those are programs that the school system does not want to eliminate or reduce. They believe they're good for children, and yet, if you don't get the support from the state, how is that gonna happen?
Well, the committee members did ask, well, I forget the district, but they asked them, what would they cut if this would go through? And one of the things they said was all-day kindergarten.
Yeah.
And for us, I remember when we implemented all-day kindergarten five years ago, we rely on a lot of open choice money for those kindergarten students. And I remember when we went to vote, I said, "What are we gonna do if the state takes money back from the choice program?" And what was I told by the superintendent? "That will never happen." Well, it has happened, and it could continue to happen. And so we could lose a double whammy. We get money for the kids, so if, for example, we don't have all-day kindergarten, but we go back to having it half-days like we did before, we could lose some students to other area daycares that have all-day kindergarten, and then we're gonna, if they're choice kids, then we'll lose that money as well. So it could be a double whammy, depending on how it all works out.
Yep.
So, but, all right, thank you.
Just thinking that's, all right, thank you very much. Report of the Town Attorney, Attorney Mastriani.
Good evening. I have a report to thank.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lee, it's your turn.
I have a couple of items. The first item I have is the 2017 paving program. Town staff has put together a list of roads to be paved during the upcoming construction season. It's proposed that the following streets will be paved this spring, Broad Street between Whiting and Route 10, Park Street between Maple Street and Route 10, Irving Street, Race Avenue, and Crown Street. In the summer, it's being proposed that Linden Street between East Broad and Woodford Avenue be paved, as well as Winter Street, Summer Street, East Maple Street, Milford Street, Woodland Street, and Kent Street. And for the fall, the following streets are proposed, and that's Gilberti Street, Furland Street, Paul Street, Dallas Ave from Dewey to Milford Street, a Milford Street extension from Dallas to Arcadia and Merline Avenue and Dewey Avenue. So that's the list for next summer. Hopefully, we can get through it. And I know that they're starting to gear up and get some of the roads ready, probably beginning next month, so. Wheeler School Project update. The joint meeting of the Capital Products Building Committee, Town Council, and Board of Education to get an update on the Wheeler School Project, originally scheduled for tomorrow evening, has been rescheduled for next Wednesday, March 1st, at 6:00 PM at the Wheeler Elementary School Library, and it sounds like that's gonna be after the PTE.
PTO meeting.
At this meeting, ONG and KBA will present the plans for the project, as well as the estimated project costs. The public is invited to attend this presentation as well. Next item I have is access agreement, White Oak Corporation property. Town staff has been in contact with Marcia Tofflon, owner of the White Oak Corporation property adjacent to the Municipal Center, regarding the potential redevelopment of the property. This is a very strategically-located property in the center of the downtown, consisting of approximately 14 acres. It has been vacant for quite some time, and the potential purchasers have expressed, and potential purchasers, they don't have a "the" potential purchaser, but potential purchasers, have expressed concern regarding possible ground contamination from its many years of past use as a construction yard. The town has the ability to apply for grant funds to perform studies to determine the extent of any contamination. If necessary, grant funds could also be available for the cleanup of the site as well. In speaking with state officials, and I've had several conversations with them in at least one meeting, in order to apply for the grants, the town must have in place an access agreement with the property owner. And there is an item on the new business that would authorize the Town Manager to execute an access agreement with the White Oak Corporation property. Next item I have is the October 1st, 2016 grant list. This is a revaluation year, just to point out that every five years, town staff has to revalue all of the real estate in Plainville. According to the Town Assessor, the October 1st, 2016 grant list increased by $2.7 million, or 0.2% over the previous year. This slight increase would generate approximately $90,000 in new revenue at the current mill rate of 31.99. There are three major components to the grant list, namely, real estate, motor vehicles, and personal property. Real estate makes up approximately 83% of the total grant list, with motor vehicle at 10% and personal property at 7%. In the October 1st, 2016 grant list, real estate dropped by $8.5 million. Motor vehicle went up $3.5 million, and personal property increased by $7.9 million. If you do all that math, that's where you get the increase of $2.7 million, I mentioned previously. The grant list could change going forward, depending upon the assessment of appeals But that's what's signed it in place and will be used as a basis for our budget, at least, you know, initially. If we're aware of any changes between now and when the budget's adopted, we'll incorporate those as well. Next item I have is the governor's proposed budget, impact to Plainville. The governor's proposed two-year budget that he submitted to the state legislature could have a dramatic impact on the property taxes in Plainville if enacted. Under the governor's proposed budget, statutory formula grants would increase by about $300,000. However, he has also proposed that municipalities pay into the teachers' retirement system. The teachers' retirement system was established by the state going back to 1939. Teachers' Retirement Fund has been underfunded and mismanaged for many years. Rather than address the shortfall at the state level, the governor's proposing that the municipalities pay a portion of the teachers' retirement bill. It is proposed that Plainville will contribute $1,927,428 in fiscal year 18, which is next year's budget, towards teachers' retirement. The bottom line is that the net impact of the governor's proposed fiscal year 18 budget to Plainville will result in raising an additional $1,654,594 to the bottom line. This is roughly the equivalent of 1.25 mils. This alone would result in a tax increase of 3.89%. To put that in some perspective, over the last four years combined, the tax rate in Plainville has increased by 3.56%. Town staff will continue to monitor the state budget process. One major concern is that the state budget may not be in place by the time Plainville votes on the budget on April 25th, notwithstanding what you perhaps heard at the Appropriations Committee level, but I guess we can keep our fingers crossed with regards to that. The Town Manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 18 will be presented at a special meeting to be held next Thursday, March 2nd, at 7:00 PM, right here in the Town Council chambers. And again, residents are invited to attend this special meeting as well. This will have the financial dashboard. This was distributed in your Town Council information, although it has been revised a little bit since then. We received some updated information, and as a result, we gave you a hard copy of the revisions. Start with expenditures, town budget, pretty much in line. It looks like we're ahead of our two-year average, but most of that is the timing of certain bills that have been paid at the Board of Education level. Town general government budget, we spent 62% of our appropriations. This is through the end of January. The two-year average has been 68%, so we're a little bit, you know, lower than the two-year average. The Board of Education has spent 50, almost 55%. Their two-year average is a little bit under 50%, but again, in talking to the Finance Director, Rob Buden, he indicated that he doesn't see any categories that are going dramatically over. It's really more of a timing issue than anything else. Police overtime, again, through the end of January, we've spent 88% of the appropriation. Roadways overtime, this is non-snow, we're running, you know, over. Nothing, I don't believe anything's changed since the last, you know, last month. Again, that's not snow overtime. Buildings and grounds is running a little bit over as well. Roadways overtime for snow is running at 49%, 50%. We've had some snow since January 31st, so, you know, getting a little closer to our budgeted amount. Buildings and grounds is running at about 39%. Two-year average has been, has been less than that, so I guess the snow made a little bit of a comeback, and we'll see what the next several weeks brings. It looks like, at least for the next week or so, it's, it's fairly above average, so we'll see what happens after that. As far as our trash is concerned, we're running pretty much close to what the tonnage is that we've averaged in previous years, through the first seven months. Revenues were, as far as all revenues are concerned, and again, this is through January 31st, we've collected 84% of what was budgeted. Two-year average is about 82.5%, 81.5%, so we're running ahead as far as all revenues are concerned. As far as current taxes are concerned, we've collected 94.4%. Two-year average is 91%, so we're doing good from that perspective. Fund balance, as it stands today, or at least we're projecting through the end of this year, be a little bit over $9 million. You can see the appropriations that have been made against that since July 1st. Special revenue funds, the first one is the Recreation Fund budget. It's running, expenditures are running, you know, about 1% under budget at 60% compared to 61%. Revenue under the Recreation Fund, these are fees that come in for the Recreation Fund. We received 62% of what we budgeted. Two-year average is about 50%, so we're running ahead as far as revenue was concerned compared against our budget. Robertson Airport, again, these numbers are a little bit skewed because of grant reimbursements, but our fund balance in the airport fund right now stands at $367,000. Water pollution control budget, we spent 67%. Two-year average is 62. Some of that is the increased testing that we have to do down at the wastewater plant. Revenues are, you know, pretty much match where we have been in the two-year average. We've actually collected more than 100% of what we budgeted, and part of that is accrued or with, you know, anticipated revenue. So we build 101% of what we, what we thought we would as far as the budget is concerned. And we set the budget in, you know, in April, and we bill in November, and, you know, so, but, you know, pretty close to what we had planned. Library expenditures are running pretty much in line with previous years. Revenues are a little bit ahead of last year's pace. I think that's a timing issue as well. Our health insurance fund, last two months, we have actually been above expected. However, when you put the seven months together, we're about $750,000 under, about 78%, 79% of expected. Would like to point out that these numbers of the Health Insurance Fund do not include, you know, some fees and some dental claims, so that number, you know, there are some other, other factors that go against that $751,000 number. As far as the major projects, we've had no, no real change from previous months, you know, since we're in the winter season. Although the, you know, the, for the most part, the playscape, the new playscape at Norton Park is completed, it's just waiting an inspection before it'll be opened, although there are some people who, despite the tape that's out there telling people not to use it, still use it anyhow, but, and they are working on Pataruski, the Pataruski smaller, smaller play area as well. So other than that, the, you know, other projects are, you know, are pretty much at a standstill at this point in time. That's all I have for the, for the financial dashboard. I will say that this has been posted online, so anybody who didn't have a copy tonight or wants to review it, follow it on the town webpage, and certainly if anybody has any questions, want to call me on it, certainly we'll try to help them along with that as well. The next item I have is the Recycle Coach application. And a new mobile device application to assist Plainville residents regarding recycling and trash collection has been developed, and I'd like to ask Scott to give a brief overview of this free application. I know you have copies of the slideshow here, but I'd like to turn it over to Scott with your permission. Are you no objection? I'll assume it's okay.
Good evening. So the Recycle Coach app is a free-to-download app that's available through the iTunes Apple Store and the Google Play Android Store for residents to use. So this is the screen that will show up when you're looking to download the app. The slideshow I'm gonna show you- The slideshow I'm going to show you is going to go over some of the features that it utilizes for our residents here in town. So after you download the app, you will set up a one-time personalization. You'll input your address, and it will link to what days are your trash and recycling So after you set up your account, you'll then be able to view a calendar. It will display all of the pickups that you will have. If there are any holidays coming up, it will also notify you of that as well. So if, for example, on Memorial Day, you know that your trash is scheduled for Monday, it will show that your trash pickup is going to be for Tuesday. Now, the Recycle Coach app can also set up reminders to remind users of when their pickups are, so for those who kind of forget when to put out their recycling bins, they can also send themselves an email or a notification on their phone. So you can set it up for all three, or, you know, one of the three if you'd like. The reminders can be set up from one week to an hour in advance, so for those of you who forget to put out the trash before you go to work, you can kind of set that reminder right before you go, so you don't have that missed opportunity. Now, these reminders are also exported to your calendars, your iCalendar for Apple and an Outlook. And once your personalized schedule has been set up, it will display the proper days that you have your pickup, and it also increases user friendliness by having a recycling quiz to kind of show you what type of recycler you are. It's a three-minute quiz that gives a comprehensive evaluation based on several criteria, and it gives you a status as to where you sit percentage-wise with the state on recycling Now, this information can be found on the Town of Plainville's website. This slideshow will be posted tomorrow morning for residents to be able to use as well, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer them.
Any questions for Scott? Great.
This is available today, Scott?
Yes, residents can download this right now. I detest it. I had it on my phone. You can type in any address. It will show you exactly, the exact details as when the pickups are.
Are we going to actually put this up on our Town of Plainville Facebook page? And the reason I ask is that oftentimes I see on some of the social media, that's Plainville Talks or some of those sites, there's always questions about when's trash collection this week, you know, if there's a holiday, or for those very reasons, so are we going to be able to put it out there?
We can make sure that that gets on to the Facebook page.
Provide a link.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, like on all the Plainville Talks, you know, all the various Plainville pages. That'd be great.
We can do that.
Great. That'd be good. Well, looks like a fun thing to do. Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
About happenings?
The next thing I have is the happenings.
Can you do it from there? I was going to say, the old-fashioned way is to just look at when your neighbor puts out his trash. This is the more modern way.
And if one puts it out wrong for recycling, we all put it out wrong.
Exactly. There's always somebody in the neighborhood that knows when it's going.
Yep.
So the first topic I have of events happening are at the Senior Center. They are hosting a Move It, a Move Like a Dancer Part II, Friday, February 24th at 10:00 AM. Miles Everett of Bristol Hospital will present a review of the physical principles of dance that you can use in your daily life. They'll look at different kinds of dance, such as ballet, modern dance, and theater dance. Following the presentation, Miles will offer a free diabetic screening to any person who would like one. The class is free, just please call the Senior Center to register. And they're also hosting on Monday, February 27th, at 12:30 PM, Questions for the Social Worker. Anybody who has questions in regards to Medicare, Medicaid, Medicare Part D, Medicare Savings Program, or housing options, may stop by and speak with Stephanie Soucy. This is for individuals to be able to have an open chat with her and just kind of get some clarification on anything that they're looking to find out. This program is for Plainville residents 60 years of age and over only. There is no pre-registration necessary, and they're advising people that no question is too small. Ask anything that you would have a concern with. The mobile mammography at the Senior Center parking lot will be held Tuesday, February 28th, from 9:00 AM to 1:45 PM. All insurance is accepted, free for women with no insurance. No one will be turned away for the inability to pay, and it is open to women of any age. There are eligibility requirements for the mammogram screening. Please inquire at the Senior Center. Give them a call also if you're looking to register for that event. On Tuesday, March 7th, at 10:30 AM, they're hosting another Veterans Coffee Hour. Now, this informational and support meeting will be conducted by Wayne Rue, a veteran liaison for the Hartford Healthcare at Home. Wayne can provide assistance with questions regarding veteran benefits, entitlements, services, aid in attendance, service-connected disabilities, and means testing, presumptive diseases, military burial, military honors, and other services. Please call the Senior Center, so they can plan for refreshments. This event is for all veterans over the age of 60 and their spouses. And they're also offering energy assistance. The State of Connecticut Energy Assistance Program is available to income-eligible residents. Information on income guidelines and more is explained in the Senior Center February newsletter, or call the Human Resources Agency, formerly known as Bristol Community Organization, at 860-582-7490. And the next item is the Bulk Pickup for Public Works. Property owners will be able to schedule their one-time bulk pickup free of charge, either in the spring or fall for the 2017 season. The Mondays that will be taking place are going to be from April 17th through June 26th. It will exclude Monday, May 29th. That pickup will be removed and placed on that Tuesday, directly after the holiday. And the Fall Bulk Pickup will be from September 11th through October 30th. Now, eligible residents must call CWPM at 860-793-6721 to schedule a pickup. When calling, please ensure that you provide a name, address, and a phone number, and a complete description of the items that you're looking to have collected. All calls that are placed by Friday at 3:00 PM can be scheduled for that upcoming Monday's pickup. Pickups must be scheduled by property owners for multifamily residents between two and five units. The landlord has to call for that bulk pickup. We ask that the items that you're placing out for bulk pickup be placed curbside, no more than 24 hours before your scheduled pickup, and please ensure that these items do not block the sidewalks or walkways to ensure that we're not creating any safety hazards. Bulk collections are for residential homes only. Please keep weekly trash separate and miscellaneous iron steel separate from bulk. For a list of acceptable bulk items, please scroll down to the bottom of the Public Works page on the town's website. Any questions can also be referred to the Public Works Administration at 860-793-0221 extension 208. And I also have the upcoming dates for the hazardous waste collection for 2017, and the first one will be April 22nd. It'll be behind Plymouth Town Hall at 80 Main Street, Terryville. And the second one will be May 6th at the Plainville Highway Garage at the end of Granger Lane. Now, all residents are required to bring a photo ID when attending any of these collection locations. That's all I have to report on.
Great. Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for Robert or Scott with their report tonight?
I do, Madam Chair. Scott, what was that last date for the Plainville hazardous waste? Is it April 26th or May 26th?
The one at Plainville is May 6th.
May 6th. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The thing I wanted to add, Scott actually didn't have on there, so I want to bring it up real quick. Tomorrow night, February 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at J. Timothys Restaurant, Senator Henry Martin and State Representative Bill Pettit are going to be holding a coffee hour for Plainville residents to talk about the state budget or anything else state-related. And I guess all Plainville residents are invited to attend and address any questions they have there. Again, 6:00 to 7:00 tomorrow at J. Timothys. And the other thing that I had was for the town manager, some of the numbers that you talked about that were, I guess, out of the draft council notes, were not the same numbers that I had, so they must have been revised.
Yes.
Can I get the revised numbers sent out? I don't have them.
They were a little different.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got an update from Bill Pettit with regards to the state revenues that we were going to be getting.
Okay. I did see there was an update from him. You translated it into, if I could get the translated version, that'd be...
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thanks very much. Thank you, Scott and Robert. The next item on our agenda is the public comment section. During this time, we ask anybody who wishes to speak to the council to come to, we have one microphone tonight. Please state your name and address, and you will be given three minutes to speak to the council. I do not have a sign-up sheet tonight, so does anybody wish to speak to the council Anybody wish to speak to the council? You guys figure it out back there, and somebody come up. All right.
Andrea Saunders, 55 Fawn Drive. I'm sorry, I had a piece of good news and I forgot to report it. Before I came tonight, Representative Pettit sent Dr. Brummett and Mr. Lee and I a report on the 100 Best Schools in Connecticut, it's the 2017 report, and this included magnet schools, charter schools, academies, every, you know, everything imaginable. Plainville is ranked 61 this year on the list of 100. What I thought was interesting, though, was look at some of the towns right behind us. Old Seabrook was 64. Southdinton was 66. New Fairfield High School was 72, and Danbury High School was 80. Anyway, I don't have any good fiscal news, but that sounded good, so...
Who was it that did that report?
It just says 100 Best Schools in Connecticut, the 2017 report. I looked, he didn't send the information on who, it's not like Forbes or anybody like that, so maybe it's something the state does. So I have to ask him, because when I was looking at the email, it didn't say, it didn't say who did the report.
It's nice to be on it.
Yeah. It's better than being over 100 and not even on it, so, thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? Mr. Frangos.
The first one, Councilman Saunders, you said 6:00 to 7:00 tomorrow at J. Timothys?
Yes.
That takes care of that one. Number two is, I just want clarity on this also. The project, the Wheeler School Project Meeting will be next Wednesday, March 1st, at 6:00 PM. Will this also be posted on system? Just, thank you. Three, another one, March 2nd, town budget, the municipal center. What time was that?
7:00.
7:00. Thank you. And the last, and this one is a question to either the town council or the town manager. With all the talk about the state budget, do we have any impact, how it's going to impact the projects that they're planning for the Town of Plainville? Wheeler.
The projects, meaning the school project?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I know that Robert Lee has some information about the potential reimbursement rate that we may get if the project's approved by the end of June, correct?
We've been assured by the Department of Administrative Services School Facilities Unit that if we, the town passes a, has a successful referendum before June 30th, that we would be eligible for 65 percent reimbursement of eligible costs on the Wheeler School project. And they indicated that they would be waiving the space requirements, because they, you have to build it to a certain size. Our Wheeler School currently is over the space requirement, but they said that they would be waiving that as well. So there certainly is some significant advantages to approving this project before June 30th.
Let me ask from a simple mind, the town is supposed to put in 12 million as opposed to, I don't know how much it was for the state, projected?
The numbers will be...
Cutting to the quick, will those two numbers change in any way?
First off, those, we haven't said what the numbers are. The numbers will be, that's part of what the meeting will be next week.
I'm sorry, what was projected, that was handed out at prior meetings, 12 million as opposed to like as new or like this, and the town, did I make myself clear or not at all?
I just don't, I just don't want to be talking about what the project costs are because they're being updated next week, so I don't want to throw out a number right now and then have to say, well, you said this last week and change this week.
No, no, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to present the question in that manner.
All I'm saying is that the project costs, most of it is expected to be eligible for reimbursement. That will be explained at the meeting, and for those portions of the cost that are eligible for reimbursement, we would get 65 percent reimbursement from the state.
Okay. And I'm sorry if I directed the question.
No, no, I just, I'm hesitant to, you know, the numbers have changed over time. We've gone from a, from a simple, do a couple of items in the school, and when meeting with the state, they said there's, you know, there's an opportunity now to, you know, not to come back, you know, every three or four years to do this and to, you know, dribble this out and dribble that out if you do a like-new renovation. They felt, and we agreed, staff agreed, including the superintendent, and the Capital Projects Building Committee, that it made a lot more sense for the Town of Plainville in the long run, do a renovate like new rather than do just, you know, the bare necessities and get hardly any reimbursement for it. So, but a lot of that will be discussed next Wednesday.
Yes, sir. Okay. Well, let me also say that, Mr. Lee, quite the problem I have with it being presented next Wednesday, residents are permitted to come to the meeting, but if I understand correctly, residents cannot participate.
It depends on what you mean, participate.
Actually ask questions. I thought, if I'm wrong, if that procedure's wrong, because you know Louis, that's...
Well, before this project goes forward, there certainly is going to be a public hearing where the residents can give their comments. So if you're hearing things for the first time, I'm sure they'll informally be able to stick around and ask questions, but there will be, you know, in the appropriation, if the council moves it forward, there will be a formal public hearing.
I'm sure.
Where residents will have an opportunity to weigh in.
All right. Thank you. And thanks for your patience.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council?
John Kislik, 65 Forest Avenue. I want to bring up the Tofflon School Project. This all relates to the Board of Education and their thoughts and their fiscal responsibility. They just told you today how bad things are going to be, and they're coming up with a budget of what, almost $700,000 more. Well, back when they did the Tofflon Project, there was a figure, and the board didn't like it, and they raised it, I don't know how much, and it went to referendum and failed. And I fought the whole project on that price. The Board of Education actually came to the town council, appeared before you, and the chairperson asked me, asked you to remove me from the Board of Edu, from the Capital Building, Capital Projects Building Committee, because I was opposed. Thankfully, one council person, I guess it was Robert Macholak, and my friend Robert Lee, said, "You're not going nowhere," so I stayed. It went out to budget again, out to referendum again, and failed again. But what I want to say about this, we had an architect who was excellent. He was honest, he was really right on the ball, he didn't nickel and dime us, he brought it down every time. Third time it passed for $2 million less. The project was completed. We even did more than they thought we could. We included a playground for the kids that the PTO was trying to raise funds for. That's how much money we had in there, and this Board of Education, and they still are, they're so greedy, they don't care about what the public is going through. I mean, we're going to lose our property tax credit. It's down to $200 now, and they lowered the income level so much that probably anybody on the Board of Ed, you know, the staff and stuff, they're not going to get it anyway. But my point is, here we go again, now we have Wheeler School. We can do a renovation project for five, approximately, because the figures aren't set, but the paperwork, you have 5.4 million less than renovated as new, and as I said last meeting, it's going to give you everything that that school needs for code, for safety. The only thing that I saw that might be different, it didn't include everything for technology. Now, how much is technology going to be for a grammar school? I don't think it's that much. But we can't afford this, the taxpayers can't afford it. You know we're going to get hit with the state, they're going to do stuff. And I'm asking this town council, you know, don't be afraid of this, Board of Education. And I'm asking this town council, you know, don't be afraid of this Board of Ed what they want because they don't care about the rest of the people. I talked to them about this at meetings before. I says, "You're not the only game in town." And they're not. But the other thing that I like about this is you're not the last voice. Building Committee isn't, and the Board of Education is. It's going to be us. And I'm planning on getting enough of information out there. Expose this stuff to the people. They say, "You can renovate this school for 5.4 million less. Why are we going to spend 5.4 million more? It's not necessary. We, we don't need it." And I have a couple aces up my sleeve, and before the referendum comes out, I'm going to expose them. And I'm hoping that any referendum that you put out for renovate as new fails. And I think we have a good shot. I'll predict it'll go down, especially with the times we have now. It's, it's ridiculous. We have to stop.
I'm sup.
I'll wait for next meeting.
Good timing.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody else? Last chance? Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. I'll close that portion of our meeting and move on to the next section, new business. We have a couple of motions.
Madam Chair.
Number one.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute an access agreement with White Oak Properties, subject to review of the town attorney.
Second. I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, I'm not sure if it's a question or a clarification through, through the town manager. First of all, that property, we toured it a couple weeks ago, and I think it's a fantastic piece of property. I think it'll, it'll work well in our town. My question is, if we sign this agreement, are we locked into anything? Any agreements with the owners, any monies? We have to put out anything along those lines? Or is this just an agreement for us to just do our due diligence and find out what's out there for cleanup and?
Yes. The answer is no. We wouldn't be obligated for any dollars. It just allows us to have access. We also, we'll put in a clause in there that, you know, that they cannot, you know, sell the property while we're going through this process.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
Motion in the second. Are there any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any other items for discussion?
Just one item. And, you know, I almost hate to make a comment after following Mr. Kislik's thoughts, but I'm going to take a chance here. Just to point out that the, the Board of Education has had very little input over the last couple of years with respect to this building project. That this building project as proposed has primarily been driven by the Capital Projects Building Committee. And the other ones have been working with the architects. The Board of Education's responsibility is basically to, to approve what they call educational specifications, which is a written description of the project. They haven't even finished, they haven't even done that portion of it yet or in the process of doing it. And most of that is going to be driven by, you know, the recommendation of citizens in this community who have volunteered to serve on a Capital Projects Building Committee. It's not the, the Board of Education that's driving the cost of this project. It's the realization of, of at least the Capital Projects Building Committee that this, they feel that this is the best way to proceed as far as the Town of Plainville is concerned. That doesn't mean people can't disagree. I just want to, before we roll the Board of Education under the bus, that they're really not driving this project at this point in time.
I think it's worth mentioning again that these numbers that we're looking, proposed numbers, that we haven't seen the final ones yet, we'll see those next week. We have been reassured that they will fit in with our debt service plan. As debt falls off, this will backfill those numbers. So in terms of cost to the taxpayer, and I'm acutely aware of how important that is, I truly am, that if approved by this number, it should fit into our debt service plan and not affect any tax increases, correct?
That's correct.
So the premise was that even with this reimbursement from the State of Connecticut, if it appeared that this reimbursement was going to be dropping off, that would negatively impact our ability to do this. So it is important to understand that. This whole plan is, is really been figured out with great attention to detail, to our long-term capital. So it's going, it will fit in, but if things change and numbers move one way or the other, then that may not be the case. But we are doing our due diligence to make sure that these numbers are going to come in where they should be.
And there'll be plenty of opportunities for people to, at some point in time, ask questions and get answers to questions. And I would ask for people not to have the answers before they ask the questions.
Okay. Okay. Anything else or is that it?
That was it.
Okay.
Action to adjourn.
Very much. All right. We do not have an executive session, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.